Ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the September 27th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the white folder by the door. If you plan to speak, would you please sign in at our sheet? And also if you do come to the podium during public comment, if you would give us just your name and your county of residence. You don't need to give your address publicly anymore. We do have absentee voting going on next door, so I would just remind you in support of elections and what's going on, if we could try to limit noise in the hallways, just to give them respect. So with that, we will move on with routine business. I'd look for a motion to approve the routine agenda.
That's my motion.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Thunder.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is our opportunity for public comment. This is if you'd like to speak on something to the commission. We'll give you five minutes. You would just come to the podium and give yourself your name and your county.
My name is John Cunningham from Minnehaha County. I'm here to talk again about election integrity, but this time about the count, the accuracy of the count. You use paper ballots, and paper ballots are necessary because of the number of military and disabled and other people who need those paper ballots. But if 200 people vote in a precinct, then at least some of them, a handful of those, will mismark the ballot. And as a result, the tally will never quite exactly match what those 200 people intended to vote for. In fact, the most contested election in our history was over paper ballots that went all the way to the Supreme Court to determine which of those ballots should be counted and which not counted. There was never any question about the voting machines. There's never been a problem with voting machines in our history. Now, there are people who would tell you differently, but that's just not true. But don't take my word for it. In the last election, the deniers felt that they had the best opportunity possible to show the fraud in election machines. The voting patterns in Maricopa County had shifted so significantly and to them suspiciously between 2016 and 2020 that they hired a forensic accounting firm to come in and do a forensic audit. And that firm, which was not unbiased, they were firm denier believers, said they could find election fraud and report it within three months. Three months came, four months came, five months came, and after six months, they had to admit that in their report that the machines were accurate. There's never been a machine problem. But that doesn't matter. The people who believe in election fraud, the deniers, believe. And facts and reason and logic don't matter, they believe. Now, I believe in a divine God, and I have no facts, no logic, and no reason to believe that. There's nothing that can prove the existence of my divine God, but I believe. And they believe in earthly God in the same manner. Total, complete belief without any facts or reason or logic to support it. But being an earthly God, they do need some facts and figures, so there have been created wild conspiracy theories, scientific in videos, even a whole movie has been created that tried to prove the existence of voter fraud. All of it, of course, not true, but, and they live in the world of what they would call alternative facts. And those alternative facts are kind of a golden calf that they can tag on to make their beliefs sound real to them. So what I'm saying is that we, the rest of the people, depend on you, power leaders, to use your knowledge, experience, judgment, reason, and logic to defend us from that religion. And although I'm a veteran myself, I'm going to say that I want to thank you for your service and may my divine God bless you.
Thanks, John. More public comment?
Scott Anderson, Minnehaha County. I recently read an article in the Dakota Scout that the Minnehaha County Commission is considering moving public input to the end of the meeting, which is pretty ironic because it's exactly the same thing the city council did a few years ago. Reason the city council did it is because one person came up and called the former mayor an SOB, and she didn't say SOB. That person still comes to meetings and still talks, never stopped her. In fact, she comes probably more. All it did was disenfranchise all the good people who come to the meetings and speak. There's this argument that somebody in the audience that's getting a rezone or a beer license or whatever, they're way more important than all the public who pay your wages, who fund the government, and who come to these meetings on their own time. Nope, the public's more important. In 2016, the former mayor, who was mayor at the current time, Mr. Heather, he came up to the county commission. He spoke for nine minutes without being stopped by the chair of the county commission, which is still the same chair. Nine minutes, he talked about how wanting, he wanted a federal government or a county handout to build some kind of drainage to his cabin he has out there on that swamp, Diamond Lake. Nine minutes he spoke, nobody stopped him, and he rambled on and on and on. I didn't have a problem with it. That's how public input should work. People should be able to come up and talk to you guys for as long as they need to, to address a topic. Now, all of a sudden, some people are showing up that you're mad at and you don't agree with. I don't agree with them. I think that the elections run fine in South Dakota. They can be a little slow, but they work. But that doesn't mean they don't have the right to come up here and talk. It's called public input. It's my opinion of what I think about an issue or something going on. It's not your place to go, well, this group of people are crazy, and they don't know what they're talking about, and they call people names, so they need to go at the end of the line. Because I told the city council recently, public input isn't a time to come up here and talk about people's birthdays or pat you on the back or talk about the Renaissance Festival or whatever. Sure, you can come up in here and do that, but that's not what it's here for. Public input is to dissent the government. It's in the First Amendment, dissent. Do you know what that word means? It doesn't mean that we're coming up here and telling you how great of a job you're doing, we can do that. But the whole point of the First Amendment is to dissent our government, and that should be at the beginning of the meeting. All you're doing is falling in line with the authoritarians that run city government by moving public input to the end. Should leave it at the beginning, should be five minutes, not three minutes. And I've never understood, all these boards, school board, city council, county commission, that there's a time limit on these meetings. There's no such thing as a time limit on government meetings. There isn't. Check your bylaws, check everything. There's nothing in there that says that meetings have to be done at a certain time. If it is getting long and somebody needs to go somewhere, you have the ability to recess the meeting to the next day and start again. So this baloney that somehow the meetings need to end at a certain time, somehow we need a three-minute or five-minute limit, they're just a bunch of rules you're pulling from your butt. That's it. They're not based on anything. It's like I said, the city council changed the rules because of one person who continues to show up to the meetings. That person actually got elected to be the president of a neighborhood association. Didn't seem to hurt her one bit. So I hope you don't move it. I hope you leave it just the way it is and grin and bear it when somebody comes up here and says something you don't like. That's what you do in life. That's how things are. Thank you.
Mayors?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Vicki Byrne, I'm from Minnehaha County. I am also going to speak to moving the meeting times and shortening them because it is our First Amendment right to voice our opinions to all of you. Instead of taking a step in the wrong direction and making the process of representative government more difficult, you should be making the process easier and more transparent. The people of Minnehaha County are already leery of the government, and this only makes them less confident that the government is fair and...
I look at allowing the meeting times to continue on the first part of the agenda and also maintaining the five minutes as opposed to reducing it are very important ways for you to get input and information from the citizens of the county. My wife and I have lived here for just a little over a year. It's a beautiful city, beautiful county, and we love it. But one thing that we are noticing is that there seems to be, shall we say, an uptick in crime. These are things that I've discussed with people, but as commission members, how would you know that without input from the public? Not just about crime, but other issues. Some people are talking about voting, some people want to discuss issues involving the environment or how we're taking care of things within the city and county. These are things that I feel like you need to know about, and the best way to get that is directly from the horse's mouth. That would be the citizens of this county. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else?
My name is Gary, Minnehaha County. I have a question to start with. Is item number 20 going to be open to public input?
Yes.
And that's part of why I'm up here. I would rather not get up here at the beginning of the meeting and speak on something that's later on in the agenda. I would rather wait and hear what Tyler would have to propose and some of what your discussion is, to know what I might want to talk about or to ask further questions about. I would like to see, I would like to see public, number one, I do not want to see public input go from five minutes to three minutes. I agree with the previous speakers. I believe you all are making 40-plus thousand dollars a year to sit here. I think five minutes of our time is warranted, and how are you going to know what the public wants if you don't hear us? But I would also like to see on the agenda to allow public input on every item, or at least make it clear upfront what items are not going to be on the list. Because if I get up here and speak now, and then Tyler gets up here and explains what you want to do and you have discussion, now I'm no longer allowed input. And I might have a question, or I might want to have a view that I'd like to express at that time. So I'm asking you to, I think the public input at five minutes is not too much to ask. Your chairs look pretty comfy up there. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. And I'm bringing this morning a little binder here full of documents. These are full of denial letters. Every single county in the state of South Dakota has been busy denying our FOIA requests that we are requesting in regards to election issues. It's public information. Why is everybody denying it? And so by you wanting to move the public comment to the end of the presentations, by you wanting to limit the time for a public comment from five minutes to three minutes, it's just one more piece of denial that we are facing that makes us think, what is going on? Why is everything being hidden? Why is everything being stifled? And so by moving public comment from five minutes down to three minutes, it's just one more piece of information that fits into the binder of what's being hidden. We just want to know what's going on, we want transparency, we want to be able to speak, we want people to be able to ask us questions, and nothing ever happens, nothing ever changes. We have been asking for months to be put on the agenda to talk about election integrity. It's a real thing. It's a real thing. And we can't even get on the agenda. And now you're taking our public comment time away and possibly changing that as well. So I guess I would request that you leave it at the beginning. I would request you leave it at five minutes, and you don't limit it to 30 minutes to be able to talk. So thank you for your time.
Additional public comments? I think Scott had something.
Good morning. Scott Anderson, planning director. I live here in the county. I, changing the subject, would just like to give you a short update on Wall Lake. We will be, this will be the last weekend it'll be open. Hard to believe, but fall and winter are rolling around, and so part of the process is we blow out the water lines. We are serviced by Wall Lake Sanitary Sewer and Minnehaha Community Water, and our water lines are not to the depth that you can leave them over the winter, so we blow out all the lines. We've had a very good summer. We, if you're not aware, we installed a nine-hole disc golf course, which is widely used, far more than I had ever anticipated. We have people stopping from all over the United States that I guess like to have it on their to-do list to hit golf, mini, or disc golf courses from all over the United States, which has been very good to see. I also wanted to let you know that we continue to manage the ash trees that we have out there. We do have some ash trees that are located along the steep banks of the lake. We monitor those. Luckily, most of the larger trees that are in the park are not ash trees, they're cotton woods, hackberries, we have some lindens and some other decorative trees. Not to say that we don't have a few ash trees, but we are monitoring those. And with that being said, the Wall Lake will be, as I indicated, closing. It'll be open through the weekend, but on Monday it will be closed, and that's not to say that you can't continue to use it. The parking lot's closed, but we do make provisions for parking along the side of the beach, so you can still park and walk or do whatever, but the facilities will be closed and there'll be no more garbage pickup. And so we do indicate that if you are bringing garbage, pack it in, pack it out. So thank you very much and have a good day.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we're going to go on with regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to amend the High Plains Ranch Planning Development District 10-0605 by amending the sub-area designation of the property described as Lot 20 of High Plains Ranch addition in the Northwest One Quarter Section 8 Township 102 North Range 49 West from subdivision D to sub, oh, excuse me, sub-area D to sub-area 8.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. This is a major amendment. As a major amendment, it is similar to ordinance amendments and rezonings in our ordinance, but it's specific to planned development districts. If we can maybe scroll down to the map. The subject property is located near the Big Sioux River in between Renner and the city of Crooks. The, wait for the map to come up. Here it is. The, maybe go one more slide down, actually. The planned development was developed in the early 90s for the multiple subdivisions, including rural residential area, an agricultural area, and then an area for combined ownership for horseback riding. Over the years, the sub-areas have changed a little, and the horse-riding combined area has been removed, and it's been changed to an agricultural area. But the changes here from sub-area D to sub-area A would be effectively changing from agriculture to a residential zoning district. The item was first brought to the planning commission on May 23 of 2022. At the planning commission, discussed the road development for the proposal and expressed concerns about additional septic systems near the Big Sioux. The item was then deferred to allowing time to address the items, the concerns. The second hearing was on August 22. The petitioner hired an excavator to dig some holes and found that the soil is dry and conducive for septic systems. The area is also outside of any sort of watershed protection area that would cause issues for extra septic systems. The petitioner during that extra time also met with the township, and he confirmed with the township supervisor that if he was to bring the roads up to the township standards, the township would be willing to accept them as their road maintenance. With these extra time, then the August 22 hearing, the planning commission still unanimously recommended denial of the proposed project, the major amendment. The denial recommendation was largely due to the precedence that allowing residential development in the area when density zoning generally limits residential development. The planning commission did not want to have more residential development and potential for others to come. The, let's maybe go through a few of the photos here. The petitioner used the layout that was presented in the 90s. He was going to change the layout, and you can see the arrows that would be combining lots. He suggested that they'd be about five lots, and this road would no longer be part of the proposed layout. If approved, the petitioner will have to go through a final development plan to show how the lots will be laid out, and that'll be presented to the planning commission. And you'll see here that right now, the one road along the east side is a minimum maintenance road. This is looking back south from kind of the entrance of the proposed subdivision. And this is looking at kind of a waterway in the hill where the subdivision is going to be going. And I'll skip through here. There's a photo of where the watershed protection district is located, and it is out, the parcel is located right here in the blue highlight. And then I have several photos of the holes that were dug showing that there's no groundwater present. The county commission is a major amendment. I may vote to amend, approve, or deny the major amendment, and I'm here for any questions.
Any questions for Ken? Commissioner Karski?
Any comments from neighbors out there?
There wasn't a whole lot of comments of neighbors. There's been a few neighbors have been kind of watching, but out of curiosity and wanting to know more about the project, but there hasn't been a lot of neighborhood discussion about it.
So is any opposition to the whole thing? Okay.
Not really, no.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kevin? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, is anyone who wants to speak? Are you in favor? Yeah. I was going to say, it's your, right, exactly. You should say something.
Yeah, Dave Rogers, Minnehaha County. I'm on behalf of my mother, it's her property. Knowing there's a need for housing, she decided it's probably a good time to move it, if approved. And we went from 10 lots down to five. It'll increase the size of the lots, it'll also give a person opportunity to build a shed if wanted.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions?
Any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. R...
Any questions for Mr. Roggins?
Madam Chair, I'm sure I'll think of one or two, so I'd like to maybe reserve the ability to bring you back up.
Yep. Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this development? Okay, not seeing anyone move, so then I would bring you back to the Commission for comments. Questions? Commissioner Burr, I can tell you're gonna say something.
No, I'm just full of it. You know, the Planning Commission was not enamored of this project. And certainly while we are in need of additional housing, I don't know if we need half a million-dollar houses. And are we going to create another village out in the county? You know, are we going to allow this acreage, that acreage, all to be populated with new homes? That's kind of where we thought.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Kirsten.
You know, I'd be just kind of fascinated by the process, I guess. And I, I look at where this is and there's probably fifty, sixty homes within a quarter mile of it. I mean, it's just an extension of an area that exists by the Renberg School. Seems like the township doesn't have a problem with it, the neighbors don't have a problem with it. Half a million-dollar house, sounds like an expensive house, but it's not that much higher than, I don't know if housing value is even relative to the discussion. I'm just looking at it thinking, why wouldn't we do this? And I'm not coming up a good, for, with a good reason for no, other than we don't want it, which doesn't make sense to me.
Commissioner Bender.
My understanding from reading the record is that there is significant concern about adding more septic systems in that area. I'm curious if Commissioner Burr wants to comment on that.
Madam Chair, it is uphill from the water area. And so as you add additional septic drainage, it's an issue that's come up in other areas like, what's that one over there by Chemcast or whatever up on the hill? I think there are issues with, with septic systems that we don't want to overwhelm. At the same time, they could be built with a plan to interconnect them to the sewer and water as the city expands out. But as I recall, that was a lot of the issue.
I'd also comment, and this, Commissioner Bennigan, do you have something to say?
It is not part of the envisioned, Kevin, twenty, twenty-five to put more housing in this area. You're giving away five building eligibilities. If there was five building eligibilities you could move here, that might be a different story. For those, if they're acre to two acres, you're talking at least maybe fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. You're giving somebody to build a development. And I don't think that's fair to the neighbors who have building eligibilities and are selling one at a time. If you don't have five to transfer over there, there's a reason those building eligibilities were put up in Minnehaw County years ago and that was to preserve agricultural land and to not have widespread property run across, you know, just spotting here and there and chewing up what we, our number one industry in Minnehaw County is agriculture. And I do have concerns about septic tanks being on because part of the concerns were there's no sewer system planned for this area. We've already got a lot of people in sewer system, on, on septic tanks out there. And to the city eventually, I don't know how far, you know, there are ways, they're actually a long ways out. But you're not gonna have a sewer system out there and it's already a struggle. And, you know, what's the water issue too? So, I don't believe that I will be supporting it. I'm still interested in what everyone else has to say.
Commissioner Burr? Commissioner Bennigan?
Oh, sorry. I guess I have a question about the contract report, if you will, contractor's report on saying that the septic system was possible in that particular area is what I heard the, uh, conditional...
Correct. Joe Van Der Snick was the guy that went out there and dug. He didn't have any problem with it. It's outside the, um, you can only be so many feet within a waterway. It's well outside of that. As far as septic tanks go, I know they've been tested the river for a long time. I've never heard that it's got worse. And there's a little separate things, like you said, all along.
Was there any state reports that were put together or reviewed? Sometimes the state has some input into the process about how close you are to a river and all that kind of thing?
Not that I'm aware of, it's just within law that, as, what the state has is so many feet from a river and it's well outside of that.
Correct.
The closest ones outside of that.
I guess if this was approved, there's probably gonna be demands for the township to enhance those roads 'cause they're, right now, they're obviously not maintained. Does the township have some concerns about the cost of that?
No. I talked, talked with Don Ojlaugur, he's well aware of it. He came and spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, doesn't have a problem with it. I'll have to have the road up to county standards before they'll take it over. And I'm well aware of that. And I are in the same age. So everything's in place for, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's no comments?
If I may.
Commissioner first.
The housing eligibility argument really does probably make the most sense. And I understand, you know, why, why it's in place. I guess for me, the perception of eligibilities is we didn't want to put a house on every twenty acres. This is more concentrated housing next to a housing area. And septic systems aren't an outhouse. It's not a hole in the ground that move the house over, fill in and move the house over every once a year. It's, a septic system is a very well-engineered process. I will vote in favor of this. To me, it makes sense. We're looking for the, um, inventory of residential lots is diminishing quickly and people want...
They would have never built. That's, that's baloney, I'm sorry. And so every time we allow urban sprawl to take over the best land in South Dakota and take it out of farming, take it away from production, I, I don't like it. That's my view.
Scott has a comment, sorry. Dave?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you again, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. I just, just for history's sake and continuity and consistency, I do want to remind you that about five or six years ago, we had a rezoning request to rezone property to a planned development almost directly across the road from this. And it was sort of an interesting circumstance. There was a, a horse barn, if you recall, that was on a, a small acreage. They wanted to build a house on that because it was conducive for a house. Denied by the, by the County Commission. And so, um, as our old Commissioner Pecus would used to say, we need to be, you know, you don't wanna appear to be arbitrary or capricious. And by denying one thing across the road for one lot, for one house, I, I just don't feel it, maybe it looks consistent. And so that's another thing that popped into my mind and I think that you at least should be cognizant of that. In the past, you have denied rezoning requests directly, almost directly across the road from this.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr.
Question for Scott. Scott, that was ten acres in a small barn, right, for a horse?
I couldn't, I can't remember if it was six or ten acres, but it was in, a small acreage. The, the owner that purchased some land, knowing there was no building eligibility, wanted to put their horses on that parcel of property. And, and they then built a barn to, so their horses were sheltered. Then subsequently, they decided to move and felt that really the only way they could sell it was with, with the housing eligibility. Wasn't necessarily the case, they ended up selling it. But I think you may recall that case. And basically, it's directly across the road from this site.
Commissioner Kirsten.
Scott, in the last twenty years, just estimate, how many housing eligibilities has the county lost because of development?
Well, I would say, uh, in the last twenty years, I've been here eighteen, I would put that number between annexations from the city. I mean, the city of Sioux Falls has annexed a lot of property. Foundation Park, I believe there was like eleven or twelve building eligibilities that just disappeared when the city, that it's pumped on a regular basis. So, uh, it continues to properly treat that water. So a septic system, if it's installed correctly and you have the right amount of drain field, that water that's going into the groundwater should have already been separated at the tank. Some biological treatment has occurred and then it goes further down. And as it, as it soaks into the ground, there's also more biological, uh, action that's occurring. And typically, you should not have problems. But there's a lot of shoulds and maybes there about maintaining them. You have to pump them, they have to be installed correctly. You can't overwhelm them. You, you can't have a, a septic system that's designed for a three-bedroom house and then have a family with eight children and you're doing five loads of laundry and you're, and you're bathing children every night because you will overwhelm your septic system.
Commissioner Bender.
So through our permitting process, do we have the ability, at least on the front end, to make sure that the system that's designed and built meets the standards that you're describing?
Yes. We, we, when a septic system is a plot, applied for, an onsite, an onsite wastewater disposal system, you, the, the, so the septic installer has to be certified by the state and they, uh, through that certification, design a system that is based on a number of bedrooms. So all the septic systems in the county are, are sized according to the number of bedrooms that you have because that sort of implies how much water usage you potentially will have. So, uh, that gives you the size of a tank that you need to treat that water and the amount of drain field that will also then treat, continue to treat that water as it has been pre-treated at the septic system. And then that's the first sort of line of defense. The second line of defense would be we have a septic, we have a building inspector who's also certified. He goes out and makes sure that it's installed correctly. So there's a number of steps. But once, once that dirt goes on top of that septic system and it has been designed and inspected, that's when you potentially are going to run into problems down the road. If you have circumstances that arise, like over-usage from, from families that live there, if you had some kind of a change of environmental conditions like high water, you have unseasonably wet year where you have groundwater that is coming up. And we can see that in other areas of the county. But if your septic system and drain field somehow should become oversaturated from the groundwater coming up, you're gonna have problems. Because part of that is it, part of a septic system is it percolates down and part of it is it evaporates up. And if you have unusual weather conditions, like extremely wet weather conditions, your septic system may not function as well as it normally does.
Okay. Can I ask one follow-up question? So I see that the staff recommended denial of this. And it appears to me that this proposed subdivision is in a transition area. And was that the primary reason for the staff recommending denial? It was hard for me to tell through the reports if that was the primary reason.
Well, I think that it's a combination of consistency and consistency with density zoning. And you're right, in transition areas, we do like to cooperate and, and piggyback with a municipality, if possible, so that we can direct that wastewater. The best situation is that that, for no groundwater contamination, is that you are able to hook into a municipal waste disposal system like the city has or, or like Hartford is building. So it's, it's treated, it's further treated or treated in a better manner. And then you have no groundwater contamination at that site, provided you don't have line breakages.
Additional questions?
I'm, I'm not gonna support it.
I addressed that septic tank issue. I agree, if you're, you run into high water, that's not gonna happen here. I grew up on this place. I lived through the flood of sixty-nine, eighty-five, two of them. That does not get wet. We grew up right northeast of it, down low. That farm place never got wet. We never had a problem with our septic tank. I live right north of Lyons, right on Skunk Creek, never had a problem with a septic tank. So, um, I think there may be problems with septic tanks, but they're rare.
Commissioner Kirsten.
You know, the septic discussion kind of fascinates me. Five years of city council, a lot of conversations with public works. In Sioux Falls, their wastewater treatment plant is a mechanical separator. So everything that goes to the treatment plant gets separated out and eventually gets sold for agricultural use to be spread on fields. Pretty much the exact same thing that we have going on with a, a septic system, except we're on a much larger scale. So, I mean, it's all getting applied to agricultural usage eventually anyway. So it just, when I hear the description of how it works, it's pretty much exactly what goes on at the municipal level. Again, I don't think the septic thing is a, a good argument for denial and I will still support.
So I'm gonna say it again, that I'm not gonna support this. The building eligibility is one, but this is not a part of our plan. And if we don't stand on something, what are we standing on? To me, the septic system, system is not an issue either. I have a septic system, I have a crook that runs through my yard. I have low groundwater, I mean, a high groundwater table or whatever you call it, I have no issues. It's not part of our plan. We just denied somebody over in Hartford, I believe it was, a few weeks ago because they weren't part of our plan and wanting to do the same type of thing. I'm afraid we're setting ourselves up for a slew of people coming in and saying, oh, well, let's just go in and make a small development because now the commission thinks that if we put five houses on a small acreage, that it'll fly. People who have done that in my neighborhood, and I'm a rural resident, have taken all four of their building eligibilities, or three of them, and put them in a small area. They had those building eligibilities and they put them smaller. We're granting five additional building eligibilities in an area that the planning and zoning's plan says this is not the right spot for it. And this has already come forward several times before and been denied every time by the Planning Commission and by the Planning Commission. So I'm not gonna support it. Not because septic tanks are bad, it's because they're not bad.
Commissioner Bennigan.
I'd say I live in the rural area too and I live in a septic system. So I'm, I'm very familiar with septic systems and how they work. And generally pretty comfortable with them. I really wanted to explore the issue 'cause it seemed to me that both, on the record for what the Planning Commission was looking at, that that was important. But based on the staff recommendation, that was something that was important. And I'm frankly a little befuddled as to what to do with this. I'm, I'm supportive of housing, but housing that is well-planned out and thoughtful. And I, I do think that we have, we went to the trouble of coming up with a comprehensive plan for, for good reason, which doesn't mean that reasonable people can't disagree about what fits within that plan or not.
Well, I haven't heard anything that challenges the reason for not doing this, to be honest. I agree with the septic system concept. It's changed over the years, comprehensive plans change. They need to be looked at more frequently with the growth that the cities had, what the counties had. Frankly, the one that happened a few years ago, that was one building project on six acres, had a little more neighborhood controversy than this one has. The township seems to be comfortable with it and the growth. And frankly, you can't stop growth. Growth is gonna happen. I, I can tell you for years, there was lots of conversation at the city on why septic, the system was built way southeast of town and now it's being engulfed by housing. So, um, I really think this plan is acceptable. If there's some issues that come up through the... If there's some issues that come up through the building permitting process with somebody that's concerned about how it's being built or where it's being built, that's a different issue. So I'm going to support this.
The decider has spoken.
[laughing].
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the petitioner's request.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments?
I could, Madam Chair. You know, I just want the planning commission to, you know, be recognized for the work that they do. This is in no way, you know, saying that you didn't do your job right. We are the backstop for what happens from the planning commission, for the citizens to come to us and talk to us. So if the system works, I think it's working well. I thank the planning commission. Commissioner Barth, I know you've been there for eons and yeah, and you're going to be a hard, a difficult replacement, fine for that role, but thank, you know, just thank the planning commission for their work.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye.
Barth.
No.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
No. Motion passes three to two. Item number eleven is a briefing on the Minnehaw County Fiscal Year 2021 audit. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Schaper. I'm with the South Dakota Department of Fish and State of Audit. We recently completed your fiscal and compliance audit for the year 2021. The audit report is in its final form. Each of you has been supplied with a management letter that outlines items that I would like to discuss with you. If you'll turn to the second page of that, you'll notice that there are no items on here that were, that we felt that need to be brought to the attention of the board. There were the less significant items that we brought to the appropriate personnel, adjustments were made accordingly. But to this point in time, we have nothing to bring to you, but good news, it was, it went really well. I extend the opportunity, if you have any questions for me.
Is there any questions for Jeff? Is there anybody that wants to speak on this from the audience? Okay. Was there a briefing?
That was brief as I can get it.
Thank you. Item number twelve is adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget. Susan Beaman. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beaman, Auditor's Office. We are here today to have you consider and authorize adoption of our fiscal year 2023 budget. Just to remind you of a few key points, our total budget for 2023 is $114,428,726, with our total cash applied at $13,794,235. We've gone through this at length with you. The only other thing I'll point out is that our levies are, for county levies, are 3.068 is what we will be sending to the state for approval, which is our lowest levies since 2012. Just turn it over to you for any further questions or comments.
Comments, questions? I'll just say thank you again to your staff and to our staff, the department heads who put together these budgets and the hard work that the commission put in to have just about, well, have the lowest levy brought forward since 2013? Twelve.
Twelve, yep.
That's the longest time. So, okay. If there's no questions, I would look for, oh, excuse me, anybody in the audience who wants to comment on the budget. We've had a lot of hearing dates. Okay. Any other questions? A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan. Item number thirteen is a consider motion to approve the updates to the Minnehaw County grant policy. Susan, again.
We had four changes that we are requesting to be made to the policy. Two of them are pretty much housekeeping items related to just some language related to how grants come forward to the commission, as well as just cleaning up language relating to the ASN to org objects, which just replaces old terminology. The two larger changes, the first one is just to specify that we are electing a 10% indirect rate. Many grants, many federal grants allow indirect rate and the federal government put out Uniform Guidance a number of years ago that allows entities to select a minimum federal rate of 10% for indirect without going through a negotiated indirect rates agreement. And so we would like to have us formally adopt that 10% indirect rate. And then the other item was just cleaning up some language related to the suspension of debarment checks. Uniform Guidance specifically doesn't have that threshold in there. And so we've been doing the debarment checks for all of them, but we just want to just clean up the policy accordingly.
Any questions for Susan on those policy grant changes? Anybody from the audience? Okay, look for a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is a hearing to consider the rescission of the tax payment plan resolution.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So in March of 2020, you approved Resolution 20-20, which was a tax payment plan for a property owner, Nancy Chevick. That was in the amount of $8,490.20. Tax payment plan resolution states that in the event that the owner of record does not pay all back taxes, penalties, and interest owing on that property, in accordance with the terms of agreement, Minnehaw County may proceed with a tax deed process. Now, the rescission I have asked you today does not mean that we are starting to take any action against, so it just kind of states that the tax payment plan that we had in place is no longer in effect. So the property owners had made some payments over the last three years. They made two payments in 2020, six payments in 2021, and one payment in 2022. This tax payment plan was originally scheduled to be completed in April of 2022, not 2020, but 2022. So it was scheduled to be done. They have not been able to make payments. So I guess it's in our opinion that this tax payment plan, it just not been able to demonstrate an ability to be in compliance with the tax plan, considering that the tax, the property owners are in violation of the terms of agreement, along with the guidance of the state's attorney's office, we would ask that this tax payment plan be rescinded. I believe there may be representatives from the property owners here if they want to speak.
Any questions for the auditor? My question would be, do you have an idea of how far behind we are right now because of the tax and penalties?
Yeah, so there's been, you know, this plan, I think included years nineteen, eighteen and previous, but no payments have been made in for the years 2020, 21, 22 as well. So it's grown larger than the original tax payment plan. I think we're about over $12,000 past due.
$12,000 currently. Okay. Any other questions for Ben? This is a public hearing, so if you guys want to speak, you're welcome to come to the podium and speak. I believe these are the sons, or heirs, maybe I should say.
Yes. My name is Nathan Chevick. I currently reside at the property up for discussion in Minnehaw County. And for the last few years, I have been an over-the-road trucker. When this issue was brought to my attention around March 2020, I spoke with Mr. Bob Litz, who was the auditor at the time. He came on our behalf for this payment plan resolution. And I had, I had agreed in my late mother's name to make sure that we got this taken care of. As you know, 2020, with COVID, it's kind of rough. I was an over-the-road trucker, not looking for, I was looking for as much stability as I could have. So I stayed where I was. I hunkered down and tried to do best with what I could. But essentially, the loads that I was given as a trucker became less and less, more, a little bit more and more sparse. And then I've also got some medical issues that kind of caught up with me as well, which I was being garnished. So I was unable to, you know, uphold my end of the tax plan. But I have recently, at the beginning of July, found a new position, going to be a bus driver here for the city and a lot more stable. And I have been, I don't have any other paperwork with me, but I do have in plans to put forth close to 80% of anything that I'm making in to get this paid off as quickly as I can, regardless of the rescinding of this tax payment plan. I'm just trying to get it taken care of as quickly as I can.
Questions for Nathan? Nathan, as Auditor Kite said, we won't be taking that property immediately. And we did one a week ago or so and we thought it might be, you know, next fall. But I would encourage you, if you don't have the money, you better get it from somebody because we don't want to kick you out of your house either, none of us do. I actually looked it up. You have a nice big piece of property. Commissioner Barth.
I would just point out that you don't owe us. You owe the 200,000 people of Minnehaw County this money. And is it in their interest to give you another couple grand each year? I'm not sure. So please get this thing taken care of, move forward, pay it off, and I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this subject? Sorry, Nathan. Nobody else wants to. Okay. So I would look for a motion.
Move to approve the rescission of the plan. Second.
A motion and a second with a roll call vote.
Kersky.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Nathan, for coming and at least showing up and giving your side of the story, but get busy.
Yep, thank you.
I'm glad you have a job and we're glad, it's a good job.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is authorize the chairperson to sign the law enforcement officer's service agreement with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport Authority and convert the part-time benefits eligible airport deputy sheriff supervisor position to full-time. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have in front of you a request to amend, sign, and then proceed with our two-year agreement with the Sioux Falls Regional Airport, in which we provide law enforcement services out there. We've been doing this since 2017. Things have been going very well. We appreciate the partnership that we can provide to the airport out there and be that face of Minnehaw County when people come and visit us or leave us for their vacation. One of the things that we've transitioned over the years is right now, we've been using part-time staff only out there to fill that law enforcement role. In conjunction with the airport, we've decided to proceed with filling one full-time benefits eligible position out there, a deputy sheriff position, that would be utilized then to run the schedule for the remaining part-timers that will be needed to fill the hours while the checkpoint is open. So the contract or the agreement that we have with the airport currently is good until the December of this year. So with signing it today would be kind of an amendment. It would become effective as soon as it is signed, so we could start that posting of that full-time spot. And then it would go for all of 2023 and 2024 at that point. With your signing here, also then allows the Human Resources Department to convert the current part-time benefits eligible supervisor position to a full-time spot and make that position on the books.
Any questions for Joe?
Joe, so all of these costs are passed through to the airport, correct?
That's correct. We bill them monthly basis for all true costs plus an administrative fee for our services out there.
Okay, thank you. Look for motion.
Would make a motion to approve.
Second.
I didn't ask if anybody wanted to comment on this from the public. Okay. So I have a motion and a second to approve this contract. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kersky.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. I'll add one quick thing here real quick also in the bills today. Thank you for paying those. That was included with our rural fire department radios that you guys have utilized our response for, so thank you for that.
We forgot to tell you, Joe, that's a payroll deduction from your salary.
How many years do we have for?
A lot. Item number sixteen is authorize the public defender to sign an agreement with the Thompson Rutgers for a Westlaw Proflex subscription. Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. The request we have in front of you today is a subscription renewal for Westlaw. It's what we use in our office to conduct legal research. We have to renew it every three years. The only modification that we're requesting this year is to use Westlaw Edge. It's the same program that the state's attorney requested when they renewed their plan. It's the same one that's used across the state of South Dakota by UJS, the federal courts in many local counties. I believe it's the same one that Pennington County is using. It works out to be less than $50 per user. It's unlimited number of logins for as many times that we need, unlimited amount of time that the attorneys want to use it. It also includes drafting assistant. So we're just asking at this point in time to re-sign the contract like we do every three years.
Questions for Tracy? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, oh, excuse me.
I just, you know, we often talk about the First, Second, Fifth Amendments. We don't talk about the Sixth Amendment. How much are we willing to spend for the Sixth Amendment where you're authorized to have representation if you're charged with a crime? And this is part, a teeny bit of the cost. And thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Item number seventeen is approve the updates to the employee handbooks effective October 1st, 2022. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a relatively long list of handbook updates for you today. There's eleven before you. Instead of walking through each one, I've attached a summary of the main changes, but a couple maybe that are worth noting. A lot of these pertain to shift employees and getting a better definition of what a shift employee is, particularly in relation to our holiday benefits. Those individuals are often tasked with working on the holidays and so we want to make sure it's defined correctly. 8.13 is night differential. The main change there that I'd like to point out is that we're recommending an expansion of that benefit to the Human Services Safe Home Division that has some people who are working overnight, as well as to the Sheriff's Office, Air Guard, Airport, and Southeast Tech. Currently, that differential hasn't applied to some of those contract areas and we would like to make sure it does. The holiday benefit, the main changes there are that we are applying the holiday benefits more consistently for those people who actually have to work on the holidays and also expanding the benefits for our variable hour staff. We have them come in and work on holidays, which is a great help to our full-time staff. We'd like to pay them time and a half when they're working on holidays and double on Christmas and Thanksgiving. The cost for both the night differential and the holiday pay benefit expansions, less than $30,000, which we think is a great investment particularly right now. Another main change is to the military leave policy. We're asking to expand that benefit as well and to move it from its current 120 hours per federal year to 160. And we would like to apply that not only to our training time, but as well as active duty, other than monthly drills, of course. The jury duty benefit, we'd also like to implement a cap on that of 160. Currently, it's uncapped. The reason we want to cap it is we want to make sure that it's consistent with that military leave benefit and we know that no employee has come close to reaching that 160-hour cap. 13.2 is a new addition to the safety policy. This section, if approved, would apply only to non-law enforcement staff. Our current policy doesn't address expectations for employees who exercise their constitutional right to bear arms, and this just outlines safety practices for employees who choose to do that. 14.7, looks like there's a significant amount of revisions to employee use of vehicles, but you'll notice if you look at those provisions that a lot of it just involves moving language and updating the agreement. Any questions on any of those changes?
Questions? Commissioner Bender.
I don't really have a question. I just have a comment that while you went through that all relatively quickly, I know that this represents months and months of work by your team. These changes were all not just because somebody was looking for work to do, but because they're trying to address real problems that we have been working through. And I just really want to thank you for the work. I know you will be quick to say it wasn't just you. I know it was a whole team and I appreciate the work of that whole group and the input that we got from department heads and things to come up with, with these proposed changes. proposed changes. I do want to thank particularly IT and payroll who have been in the trenches with us and are working quickly to try and get those coding changes in place to make sure we can make that benefit happen if it's approved today.
All good. Lots of work. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Item number eighteen is authorize the chairperson to sign an amendment to the Minnehaha County Deputies Association Agreement and an amendment to the Highway Union Local twenty-five sixty-one, Council sixty-five of the ASMAC agreement. Carol.
Good morning, commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. As follow-up to what our HR director just talked about, these are amendments to the deputies' union and to the highway union, following up on the military and jury duty leave because we want to make sure that we're consistent on everything that we've done. You have the signed copies already from the union in front of you and so they have already gone through and looked at it and approved it. So there are two actions requested, two motions that you'll need to make. The first being to authorize the chairperson to sign the amendment to the Minnehaha County Deputies Association Agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Carol?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign.
Nope. You don't get to do that. I need a motion. First, I want to ask if anybody wants to comment on these contracts. And then I want a motion specifically for the deputies' association.
I thought I was, but I'll do it now.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to sign the deputies' association agreements. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the amendment to the highway union contract.
You can't trick me into that again.
I need, I need somebody. I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Thunder.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next one is item number nineteen, which is approve the update to the county policy on vehicles. Carol, again.
Thank you very much, chairperson. Yes, before you today is a request to approve the county vehicle policy. For your consideration, attached is the revised county vehicle policy. There's really, one, the major change to it is that, is that we've clarified that non-law enforcement vehicles should be marked as county vehicles with the decals on both sides. I just wanted to mention that you, somebody might say, well, wait, you took smoking and seat belts out of that language. And just be consistent, it is in employee handbook. So we're just making it more efficient. I'm not quite sure. But making sure we don't trip ourselves up either at some point. So for your consideration would be to approve that county vehicle policy.
Questions on the policy? Look for a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Did anybody want to comment on vehicles? Sorry, missed that one. It's gonna take me a while to get used to this. Item number twenty is consider a motion to adopt the Minnehaha County Board of Commission's rules of procedures. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler Black, Commission Office. Following up on last week's discussion, this for you today is to consider adopting the proposed rules of procedure for the commission. The overall purpose of these is to give some consistency as the commission changes over over time and then as well as to put in writing how the meetings operate. Once adopted, we'll have this on the county website and then it would be reviewed every July to accommodate any changes or fixes that may need to happen. One item that needed to be amended from this version, and there's a copy in front of all of you, I left a sentence in there that needs to be removed, which would indicate or to give consistency to the fact that each agenda item would have an opportunity for public comment. Those just to clarify that.
Any questions for Tyler? Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just would like to just piggyback on what Tyler said. I mean, I think that the goal of this adoption of this policy is that we could do better and that we could be more consistent, that we are constantly trying to learn from what, what errors we might have made or the, and so I really want to thank Tyler for the work he's done on this. And just to kind of point out, based on some of the public comments, that one of the changes that we are making or proposing to make is that, and Commissioner Hiberger was doing it today, is that we're going to try to make sure that we consistently provide an opportunity for folks to have public input on each item on the agenda. And so I think one of the speakers pointed out that that is an improvement and I, I think it is an improvement that we are consistent about that, that folks have an opportunity to, to visit about this. So from my perspective, what we have done with these rules is expand public comment, not contract public comment the way some of the former speaker during public comment people seem to be perceiving it. And the reason to move public comment then to the end is because we want to make sure that people know what has been talked about, what they've had an opportunity to already speak about. And then if there's still something they want to talk about, then they have an opportunity to speak. And I think the, in my mind, the reason to go from five minutes to three minutes is not very many people, like hardly, I don't think anybody this morning even went much over three minutes. And it gives every, it gives more people an opportunity to speak while still, you know, keeping it to a reasonable amount of time every meeting. And so I think, I think we'll learn things after we adopt these. I don't, I think we'll amend them after we adopt them as we learn more. But right now I, I view this as a real positive step forward.
Additional comments? Commissioner?
Madam Chair, Tyler, I appreciate your work on this, but honestly, I never got a chance to have much input. It was given to me for comment, but it was already written at that point. And I, I would say that the one part I truly agree with is the electronic devices. But I think that five minutes has worked well for the last twenty years. I came to many meetings before I was first elected and I think there is valuable input that comes in at that time. I, I would suggest leaving that at the front of the meeting and adding a two-minute comment period at the end of the meeting where people that had not spoken before, say during the initial time, would have a chance to, to bring up a topic. Today, we had some excellent comments from people. Not that I agreed with everything, but I know that over the years, there have been good comments that are taken into account as we go forward. I know that I, as a citizen, it was August twenty-seventh of twenty-twelve, I, sorry, two thousand and two, I came up and in public comment and made the suggestion we start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, which we did not do prior to that. And Mike O'Connor, the only Democrat on the board at that time, made a motion to start the meeting with the pledge. It died for a lack of a second because none of the four Republicans on the board could approve, could support a, the Pledge of Allegiance because it came from a Democrat. A week later, Mike was the vice chair, chaired the meeting and said, please rise for the pledge. They did. We've said it ever since. That's an example of public comment for a, a positive reason. And I think that we, we have had some positive comments. And it's not all positive and some of it makes me a little tired, but I, I would favor, I, I don't plan to support this unless we keep five minutes and perhaps add two minutes.
Commissioner Bender?
So I would just point out first that these, to Tyler's credit, that these were submitted to all the commissioners. A second draft was circulated where, after several commissioners had provided their comments. So I, I don't think it's true that we didn't all have an opportunity to comment on this if we chose to. And I would say that, you know, the discussion about public comment and whether it's, whether we like it or not, or whether it's productive or not, I, to me, that doesn't have anything to do with the changes here. If anything, I think, we think it is important. That's why we're going to allow public comment on every item that we have in front of us. And, and I'm, so I'm, I just think that we've given folks lots of opportunity, more opportunity to have input into the system and an opportunity to hear what we talk about. And then if there's something else to say, I don't disagree that we've had lots of great public comment and that we have taken action on some of that public comment or it's affected our, the way we've approached issues. And so, so anyway, I, I don't want to repeat what I've said before.
Commissioner Karski?
When I was given the procedures, you know, five, six weeks ago, has it been? I set up a time and I met with Tyler and I had read through it and made notes. And I had one concern that was addressed about how agenda items could be brought forward. And Commissioner Bender called me up and said, yeah, we missed that. Thanks for doing that. So the change was made. Public comments always, it's kind of a funny thing. We'll go meetings without anybody making public comment. And most meetings, we'll have five minutes of public comment at best. You want to get public comments, talk about moving public comments. It's kind of ironic, isn't it? Public comments are intended to be people's concern to the county commission in a public setting, of course. I'm, my cell phone, my phone number's right on the commission website. Anybody can call my cell phone anytime and talk to me. I welcome them. And I get calls, not real often. If I get one a month, I'd be surprised.
That's because they're calling me.
I'm glad. I guess what I would even consider or put out, put forth, I'm okay with the way it is, but public comments, again, should be addressed to the commission. And if we started public comments at eight forty-five and then start broadcasting our meeting at nine, just for people to have the opportunity before the meeting to have public comments to the commission in a, maybe a less formal meeting setting, but before the meeting starts, we could be here for public comments. Just a thought. And again, as Commissioner Bender pointed out, this is the first revision, our first proposal at it, and it'll probably be revised. But see what kind of comments I get from that.
Did you want to comment?
I agree with your comments and with Commissioner Bender's. I think if there's the possibility down the road to have an evening meeting on a regular basis, I don't have any concerns about that. If that fits into other people's work schedules or whatever, I think that's important. I will remind people, just because we don't always agree doesn't mean that we aren't listening. I always get a little thrill out of that because it sounds like what my wife tells me on a regular basis. But the real issue is it's important to have it. And if we're doing it on every item that we're presenting, I think we've expanded the ability for people to have input. And I'm supportive of doing what's been proposed.
I have a couple of comments. One, we started this conversation in October of twenty-one, so it's not something new. We decided it was time to try to put some of this stuff in writing. So we've been working on it for a really long time. The Pledge of Allegiance comment that you just made, I wasn't there, but my, but my thought is, is that when the motion was made to put it on the agenda, it was not an agenda item. So you honestly can't do that. And so no one making a second is because it wasn't an agenda item and you cannot make a motion on something that's not an agenda item without being, so that's my thought. And I wasn't there, Jeff. I didn't watch it. I would very doubt that everyone was opposed to saying the Pledge of Allegiance. It might have been a procedural issue. So just defending them even though I don't know the facts. I wanted to say Gary's kind of the one, Gary Meier, who's spoken several times to us, is kind of the one that brought it forward as far as we should have speaking after every public, every, every agenda item. And it was a good idea and we discussed it later because we're like, you're right. Because it had always been the way we had done it, that you only spoke if it was a public hearing or if you spoke about a non-agenda item. Well, that doesn't work for everybody because sometimes they are here to speak on something and then they don't get to. So we've made that change just because of public comments that were given to us in the past. We are listening. We are trying to do the best we can. Commissioner Karski said something about coming early. We're almost always here. This morning I was here by eight-thirty. We're mailing around up here. We're more than willing to listen to anybody. We're more than willing to talk to people. Our cell phones are available. I do get phone calls and I do my best to either send them to the correct person or answer the questions myself or get back to them. I get plenty of phone calls and we continue to try to work with our citizens. We're very open. We're trying to get the right answers. We're not about lying or hiding or anything. Everything we have is as open as we possibly make it with respects to what our council tells us is available. I wanted to say one more thing because it was a comment and public comment this morning about a nine-minute public comment. When I first came here twelve years ago, maybe Commissioner Barth remembers differently than I do, I didn't realize there was any time limit. The time limit has come over time where we said we need to set this. And I don't remember if that particular party was a public hearing or if it was a public comment. I'm taking it that Mr. Irkman knew what he was talking about, someone saying it was a public comment. That was nine minutes long. But we didn't used to have anyone come ever for, I mean, it was, you'd get maybe five a year that would come for public comment. We just didn't have it here. And so we were lenient. Today, we were less than thirty minutes. Everybody had plenty of time to speak. I think that, you know, if the agenda was really a twenty-minute agenda, we might be willing to listen to more if there was. We're always available. You can always call us. And like Commissioner Karski said, it's about talking to us. You know, we want to hear what you have to say. We're the ones that can make the changes. So now I will be quiet, I think. Commissioner Bender did say these can always be amended. If they're not working right for us, we'll just come back and make changes to what we've done. We need to at least start somewhere. So anyone else with a comment? Public comment?
Hi, Joy.
Hi, Joy Hohn from Hartford. And I'd like to thank you all for your time. I had no idea I was coming today to speak. Usually I try to have something, so I'm very informal. I will say that, you know, I have come to you personally on pipeline issues. The election integrity people are here on different issues. There's going to be other important issues out there that are near and dear to all of us. And limiting a time in three minutes sometimes is not long enough to give comments. So I do feel that, you know, a five-minute time period is not a bad thing to keep that. And I would agree with maybe what Commissioner Barth is saying as far as doing the five minutes at the beginning and then at the end doing a couple minutes. Just to kind of, because that's your time to listen and then regroup at the end and say them at the end. So I will say Commissioner Barth has been very, you know, helping us as far as with the pipeline, you know, but I can't say where he stands on the other issues. I really am not privy to that information or don't know all that. I have sent many emails out. A lot of you have responded, but I will say, Commissioner Benega, you have never responded to an email that I have sent you. I've never received a text message. I've never received a phone call. How do we know if we're, if these emails are getting read? And this is our time to, you know, present that to you. And Commissioner Hiberger, I'm going to ask, why are you the only one that can put something on the agenda? You go to, I've been to many other county commission meetings, other county commissioners.
You have changed that. You need to read the rules.
Okay. I'm sorry. I came late and I wasn't even aware of this. So, thank you. Sometimes I feel like, you know, like Commissioner Bender with you being an attorney, which is great for the council and your background. But I do feel like maybe, I would like to know like if you've actually, you know, researched or, or studied our issue a little bit more and called the PUC and seen what the commissioners are saying from the PUC that what you can do in our position. You know, I kind of feel at times that you guys are, you know, you're sitting up there and you're a little bit higher than us and we're all equal. We're all equal. We need to be heard. I seen Commissioner Karski a few weeks ago. You didn't even hardly make eye contact with me. And I think it was because you didn't want to hear about the pipeline. I'm not sure, but could be, you know, because, you know, I, I'm sure you guys are sick of this, but this is personal to many of us, day in and day out in our lives. And so we appreciate the public comments. And when we don't get responses with emails or phone calls or text messages, this is our opportunity to be heard. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
Can, can I follow up with that?
Yep.
I would say that there's probably, I don't even know. I haven't counted, but the most number of emails, texts, I don't think I got that many phone
most number of emails, texts, I don't think I got that many phone calls about the pipeline issue. That's a legal issue from my perspective that has to be clarified, because the county commission, as I've said publicly multiple times, is a PUC issue. Eminent domain is not our issue. That's a legal issue. If we get to the point where the PUC finally decides that we can have more input, we will do that. The PUC has, frankly, I don't know, suspended conversations at least three or four times or delayed that. So it's really, you can't make an opinion on something that's not complete, and you don't have any legal responsibility for. So that's my position on a lot of those things that people were asking me for judgment. I can't make judgment until I get to hear everybody's response to what's going on. And then, the other thing that was, I would say, somewhat concerning, is the fact that we sent a letter as a county commission to the PUC to address how we felt. We have not received any responses, that I'm aware of, to that conversation. So asking for me to make an opinion about something that's still in limbo, I think is unfair. And that's my personal opinion.
You have to come to podium. Remember, we're talking about rules.
Right.
We're talking about rules. We're not talking about the pipeline today. Commissioner Bender, I'd love to talk to you afterwards.
I'd love to listen to your conversation.
And if you guys haven't signed in, make sure you sign in, so we have names and addresses for the public record. So Vicki, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Commissioners. I just have one question with moving public comment to each agenda item. So say I come up and speak five minutes on an agenda item, but I'm there actually for two or three. Am I allowed another five minutes for every agenda item?
Every agenda item is different.
Okay. And then, to follow up with her, when I've been standing up here speaking, especially on election integrity so far, I look out at all of you, and you're on your computers or you're on your phone. That tells me I'm not being heard. And this is public comment, and I want to feel heard. Thank you.
Our computers are actually our agendas, so if they're scrolling on their computer, they're probably looking at agendas we can't get anything else on them. Phones, I can't speak to, but computers, the only thing that's there is what's going on in the room. Anybody else want to speak on public comment? Gary.
It sounds like the five minutes is not an issue. But Dean said that most people don't go to three minutes.
Correct.
So I don't see why we should change the five minutes, because it's not an issue. I have written the speech out before, and I have timed myself, and sometimes I have to shorten it, because I do use the full five minutes. I hope I'm not rambling when I do that. And I would agree with Commissioner Barth. I love the idea of having time at the end for, even if it's just a two-minute comment. You all have that opportunity at the end. You ask for, is there any other comments from the commissioners? And quite often, you will make a comment. We've had that happen with our election integrity group. We all leave because the agenda, or what we've talked about is over, and then at the end of the meeting, you all will make comments on it. So I think having the public being able to do that as well is a fantastic idea. And if it's a two-minute at the end, I'm not opposed to that. But I do agree that the five minutes is not an issue, so I think we should leave it at five minutes, because some people have subjects that are very near and dear to their heart, and affects their lives personally, and they should be allowed five minutes to say that.
Cindy Meyer. And did I understand correctly that the proposal is to do away with videos? That you cannot show a video from your phone?
Yes.
And so to that, I would like to say that, you know, we did have one session where we showed quite a few videos, but the reason we showed videos was because we don't feel like we're being heard. Nobody ever asks us a question, and I realize that's the rule during public comment, that you're not allowed to ask us a question. But I've also talked to some of you in regards to please putting us on the agenda so we can have a conversation. We can't get on the agenda. And so another approach for us was to, if you don't believe what we're saying, there are so many people out there that are saying the same thing. And so we show you the video to show you that it's not just us that are of this mindset, that there was something that happened in the election. And so by us being able to show you a video, we think perhaps it would have more relevance than us being up here speaking. I mean, I can tell my husband things numerous, numerous times, and he doesn't hear me until he hears it from somebody. He doesn't, he doesn't hear it until he hears it from somebody else. So by us being able to show a video, maybe we are, maybe we're not speaking the right terminology, maybe, I don't know what it is. But by allowing us to show a video of the exact same thing that we have been talking about, but it appears we're not being heard about, that is the value, in our mind, of showing a video. So I hope you will take that into consideration to continue to allow that to happen.
Videos are actually a legal issue, Cindy. That's why we put it in there. Because we don't know who the speakers are. We don't have their identity. They're not actually speaking to us. They're speaking to a broader community. You are taking their stuff and putting it on television again, which you don't have the rights to do that. And so it's actually a legal issue. Did I cover that correctly? Because we did talk about that. But you guys are setting yourselves up, and you're also setting us up to be sued. And so we just can't have videos on you. You're welcome to send us videos. I've watched several that you have sent me, and have learned stuff. So again, we do listen, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to comment on this? Additional comments from the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Tyler, where's in the rules, where is the five, where the three-minute rule? I'm looking through the contents, trying to find it.
If you go to section 5.6.
5.6?
That's right.
There's a couple of different ways to look at it. There's the section under, file number subsection one addresses opportunity for public comment. And then section three talks about allowing public comment to each individual agenda item under regular business.
I have a question about public comment, too. The non-action commission discussion, used to be old business, new business, and we changed that name. What are your thoughts about in non-action commission discussion, that you allow public
Like I said, it used to be old business, new business. And had it been, stayed old business, new business, we would have automatically had public comment, the way we're doing things now. So, I don't know. Then you would have your time at the end of the meeting.
It's a great question. You know, I think that's the kind of questions we'll, as we try to operate under these rules, that we'll come up with. I'm honestly not sure all of us even know what non-action commission items are.
No, we don't.
So, I mean, I think that if some commissioner brings up an item under non-action commission item, and somebody is here and would like to speak on it, the way the rules currently read, they would be allowed to do that.
So it's not just anything under non, non-action commission discussion, that it would be related to whatever was brought up? So Commissioner Karski? Yeah, go ahead.
If I could, the way they're designed now, the two-minute, you know, an opportunity for public to come back at the end would be duplication, because there's already, the public comments already moved to the end in this version.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
So it kind of, it's already there.
Good point. Commissioner Karski.
So I would be in favor of changing the three-minute public comment to five, or leaving it at five. But I think there's a difference between public comment and public hearings, and I don't think we limit time on public hearings, because...
On public hearings, it was to try to keep the time equal. So when Dave talked today, if somebody was against him and David talked for 15 minutes, the opposition would have had an opportunity to use up to 15 minutes, but David actually got to rebuttal afterwards. We try to keep the times, and I usually would keep track. We used to do a lot of public hearings when I first started, a lot. We don't do as many now. And we always tried to keep those even, so that they both had an opportunity to speak. So public hearing is different from public comment.
And we're not limiting public hearing input time.
Correct.
Okay. Because, I mean, public hearings can get very detailed, and, I mean, three or five minutes isn't enough. Of course, it's always up to the chair at the time to, you know, we've heard this already, we, you know, it's repetitive, et cetera, we're going to move on. If you have comments that we haven't heard, bring them, but if it's something we've already heard, let's shut it down, because we don't have to go on ad nauseam with the same thing. But I would make a motion to amend our citizen participation, section 561, to be five minutes.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments on that? I'd actually be okay with that at this point. I think we can see how it goes. I mean, that does limit the number, the amount of people that there, that would be available to speak. But we usually don't have 10 people. And when we have a public hearing, if we have 10 people, we usually ask if they have one person that can speak as a spokesman, so we don't have 10 people talking for 20 minutes in a, in a, in a, each, in a public hearing. So we do try to keep the things to not be said again. So we have a motion and a second on an amendment to change the public comment from three minutes to five minutes. All those in favor, do we want a roll call vote on that, or do you want?
Roll call is fine with me.
Okay, a roll call vote.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously to amend it to a five-minute public comment. Is there...
I'd make a second motion to approve the revised, what are we calling this?
Rules and procedures.
Rules and procedures for the county commission.
Second that. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I would just say that I do appreciate the fact that it can be changed again in two weeks or whatever, and so that's, that's probably the saving grace here, but I'm not going to support it.
Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
No.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Public, please be patient with us. What, oh, excuse me, it was five to four. Four to one, four to one, my gosh. Be patient with us. We're also trying to learn, and we're trying to learn from you, too, and we're just trying to make things right. We want these meetings to flow smoothly for everybody who participates in them. So with that, are there any commission liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
Last night, we had planning and zoning in this very room. In the interests of comparing it to public comment, we had a proposed Airbnb on Wall Lake. The proponent spoke for 40 minutes about the history of Airbnbs, and all the steps they've taken to preserve the neighborhood from parties, drug abuse, parking, septic problems, et cetera. Anyway, did not help their cause. And we voted against that one. They had another cabin completely adjacent to that Airbnb proposal, and we did allow that to be, the cabin to be taken out, replaced by a manufactured home. It wasn't that late of a meeting, but again, I think excessive public comment in that case did not help the proponent.
I'm going to the Safety and Justice Challenge Conference tomorrow, flying out for that. There's a large group of people going from the city of Sioux Falls and from county staff, continuing to look at ways to improve the way we do our criminal justice. There'll be conversations about our link, as far as what other counties do across the United States with their alternative places similar to our link. There'll also be discussions about that worm handoff, if not, maybe not the correct word, but that handoff when people come out of jail, and how do you try to keep them out of jail, and get them into the services they need. So I guess you'd call that a worm handoff, trying to get, and we have an alliance program and a CART program here, but learning some new strategies from other areas. Can't think of the other ones. It's two, two and a half days of long days of workshops, and we've got a good group going, so I look forward to bringing back some new ideas from that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Jean's got her hand up.
Oh, Jean, Commissioner.
And I wanted to also say, because there were some comments about crime, and, you know, I don't think that, I don't think that's an issue that is, that escapes any of us. And so we are working on all sides of the criminal justice system to make sure that this is a safe place. I want to give credit to the mayor of Sioux Falls, and to the sheriff of Minnehaha County and our state's attorney. They had a, they had a press conference last week, and they are initiating some meetings with the South Dakota Secretary of Corrections to talk about when folks are released from the state prison, and how that affects the crime here in South Dakota. There's a meeting tomorrow on that, that I'll be attending. And so, I mean, that's an issue that's important to all of us, I know.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, I appreciate both of you commissioners talking on that issue, because, you know, we do have the state penitentiary here, and families move here to be near their loved ones. And when they're released, they stay here. And I think that contributes to the problems that we have. I know that that's probably happened forever, but it seems to have gone up after they had that criminal justice reform bill that led to early release. I think people are released from the prison, commit a new crime in Sioux Falls, they go to the jail, not back to the prison, and that puts the burden back on us. And I feel like often the state is abdicating their responsibilities, like with the state hospital in Yankton, like with Redfield, like with the penitentiary. People shouldn't be released till they've had some, you know, treatment for their huge problems. Anyway, thank you.
You can go on and on with criminal justice changes.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Jean.
And how we're trying to do things better. Okay, is there any non-action commission discussion? Commissioner Karski.
Two things. I'll try to be loud enough in the construction zone here. First of all, call, shout out to Dr. Tyler Klatt, because he is a PhD, and we're fortunate to have him. You do great work for us, Tyler, and putting together what you did, and just being able to work with you has been, been fortunate. So yes, he is a doctor. So you're, everybody's aware of that. Second of all, on Sunday, I went to the Gold Star Family Dedication for Their Monument fantastic ceremony, and just, you know, the, what we owe to, you know, those families, and what they sacrificed, the sacrifice of their sons and brothers, you know, blank check to the country, so, just a shout out. And if you've never been to the Veterans Memorial Park, go there. It's fantastic. Yeah.
Thank you for going, Commissioner Karski. I had it on my list, but family from out of town prevented me from going, so, family from Minnesota here. So I'm sure it was a wonderful event. Anyone else? Okay, then I would look for a motion to adjourn, or excuse me, to recess for 10 minutes, and we will be meeting...
Let's figure that out.
Okay, we'll figure out where we're meeting for executive session. So I'd look for a motion for recess for 10 minutes.
Moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.